We're about ready to get going, is the song. Can you guys hear me? Sit on. Good morning, everyone. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Destination Medical Center Corporation. And I will begin with a call of the roll. Tina Smith is here. Mayor Brady.
Here.
Commissioner Beer.
Here.
Commissioner Hickey.
Here.
Ms. Park-Ronnie.
Here.
Mr. Ryback.
Here.
Mayor Ryback is joining us by Skype, where the sun is pouring into his office this morning. So, and that's good.
It's not just his radiance.
No, that's right. It's not just his radiance. And Board members, Mike Doherty and Jim Campbell are not with us today. Having a quorum, we will proceed. And the first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor of approving, those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. The next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes for December 15, 2016. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Any second? Any discussion on the meeting minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 That motion carries. We next have our public comment period. I'd like to welcome the members of our audience today. I'd also like to note that this board meeting is a little different because we have an official public hearing a little later in our agenda related to the Alatus project. So if you have comments related to that, I'd ask you to save them for that public hearing, which will come up shortly. And we have a full agenda today. So if you do have a public comment, I'd ask you to approach this podium and please keep your remarks to about two minutes. Is there anybody who'd like to make a public comment this morning? Please come forward.
Regular guest is here.
Good morning.
Hi, Maureen.
There we go. So hello, and thanks for allowing me to speak in front of you today. My name is Jamie Sunsbach, and I'm the Community Manager of Collider Co-Working, which is located in the Conley Mass Downs Building in Discovery Square. So I wanted to take just a few minutes to update you on the progress we've had at Collider and as well as the broader local startup and small business ecosystem here in Rochester. So about one year ago, we started planning for the build-out of Collider Co-Working. And six months ago, on August 15, we launched Collider. So in just six months, we've had phenomenal growth with over 50 members of Collider, 13 companies who choose to call Collider their home, 23 freelancers and remote workers have also chosen Collider as predominantly their workplace of choice. And really, the startup and small business community is on the rise in Rochester. So last year, with the adoption of several national or international events in Rochester, such as TEDx, Startup Weekend, the Fourth Annual Global Entrepreneurship Week, and One Million Cups, have really galvanized our entrepreneurial community. Our startup and small business community has attracted a lot of attention, most notably Rochester Rising, a blog and podcast based in Collider that chronicles and highlights our area startup and small business community. I've had personal conversations with people in over 10 states who are interested in Rochester and what we have on the horizon. We reached number 37 in Entrepreneur Magazine's Best Cities for Entrepreneurs. And recently, we were highlighted by Minnesota Public Radio that garnered a lot of attention to what was going on in Rochester. And this piece will soon be featured on Marketplace and broadcast around the country. So I think that's really a great thing. So really, I just want to leave you with entrepreneurship is really on the rise in our community. And the amazing thing is, this was a grassroots effort. So this has really been fueled by individuals, community groups, and businesses that are working together in the best interests of our community.
Thank you.
At the same time, we need to realize that this is just the beginning of our journey. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there any additional public comment?
May I ask you a question?
Oh, excuse me. Board member Ronnie would like to ask you a question. Could you come back up for a second?
Madam Chair, good morning.
Hi.
Hi. I applaud you for initiating a grassroots effort to support innovation here in Rochester. I think this is exactly what the legislation was intended, and that's why the board is here. I just have a question. What does One Million Cups mean?
So One Million Cups is funded through, it's a national, well, One Million Cups is in 107 cities across the United States. It's funded by the Kaufman Foundation in Kansas City, and it's really to promote entrepreneurship. So two companies pitch to a community of their peers. We have a monthly plan, so it's every month. And then the community sort of tries to help them build their businesses and make them successful. So it's a great opportunity, and I invite you to stop by.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Paula Harden. I consider myself to be a disability advocate, and I've been trying to keep up, catch up with the DMC. And I had a few questions. Don't expect you to necessarily answer them now, but I just am confused about some of the objectives of the whole DMC. Is it to eliminate cars downtown? Is it to be a tourist destination at the expense of the community members? Is it business-oriented? Are the people going to be taxed to provide transit because people that are being taxed are already too poor to have a car? You know, so I'm just a little confused because everything's all, you know, gee whiz, bling on the pictures and stuff. And I don't really understand where the community people fit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Paula, I appreciate your comments, and we'll follow up with you afterwards. Thank you. Seeing no further public comment, we will close the public comment period. Thank you very much, everyone. Colleagues, I'd like to give a chair's report to you now. First, I'd like to just note that since our last meeting, Governor Dayton announced the reappointment of our colleagues Susan Park-Ronnie and Mayor Ryback, who will now serve on the DMC board until January of 2023. I didn't, I can't even begin to plan that long, Mayor and Susan, so thank you so much. I want to, in all seriousness, thank you.
It will mean a gurney.
Yeah. I'm very pleased and I'm so grateful for your continued service. I think that particularly because this project is such a complex and challenging project, I'm especially grateful for the continuity of service that you'll be able to provide, which was something that I told the governor I thought was very important as he considered these appointments. And you bring really valuable perspectives. So thank you very much for your continued service here. I'd also like to note that a little later in our agenda, you're, I'm sure you're aware, we have a significant update from the city of Rochester and its consultants on the ongoing transportation studies that we're going to be doing. We have time set aside in this board meeting where I know that they are hoping to get some sense of whether we're comfortable with their direction. I want to just note two things, however, about this. One, I think that the, I mean, first of all, the volume of information that is included in this packet is really significant. And several of you have commented to me that we got all of this information with only about 48 hours to really digest it. And so I'd like to just recognize that it's challenging to dive through all of this with not a lot of time, and we'll work on that. I also want to say that I am going to recommend to this board that we also set aside some informal working sessions to have a more in-depth discussion about these transportation, these transportation plans, so that we can provide further input. And I'd like to just assess the interest of the board in doing that. Of course, so these would be similar to a committee of the whole working session that a city council would have or a county board would have. It would not be decision-making board meetings, but they, we would certainly notice them, and they would be public meetings. And the purpose, the sole purpose would be to give members of the board who have an interest, an opportunity to really dive in and have kind of more give and take than is maybe we often get in these meetings. And so could I just assess from my colleagues whether that's something that you might be interested in? I'm saying.
I think that'd be good. The one thing, you know, I wouldn't be adverse to be going up to the cities and doing that because a lot of you people come down here from the cities. I mean, if we're not making public decisions, it might be advantageous for us to come up there.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mayor Ryback.
I'm very interested in, you know, transportation is obviously something I've been quite focused on. So I do have a lot of information, really sort of hunger for a very in-depth conversation. Part of this is also that all information isn't equal. A, if our packets could be smaller, I think that's okay, and focused on, you know, what's the biggest thing coming up and give us some direction on that. But also if those retreat-style meetings, or use a better description of them, could basically say from 1 till 3, we're talking about transportation, and 4 till 5, we're talking about innovation, or something like that. It would give us the ability to not plunge as deeply into every single topic, but show where we can add some value specifically.
Thank you. Good feedback. Madam Chair. Yes, Ms. Ronnie.
Thank you. Members of the board, I understand from the Rochester Bulletin this morning that there were 1,001 pages that were condensed to pages 55 to whatever the page is. That's a lot of volume, and it shows that consultants have done a great job into delving into details. I'm interested in transportation because this will set the backbone for the next 50 years, and we may not be around, just like Mayor Ryback indicated, and 2023 we may be taken out by a gurney's. So I suggest that we take careful look at this. The community is very interested, and furthermore, the developers are very interested, and so are the small businesses at Front Second Street and other major streets. So I would like more time as well, and I second Commissioner with regard to having these meetings up in the city as well.
And I would agree. I think it'd be a wise decision that we spend some dedicated time on this. Good.
Thank you. Well, I'll take that as positive feedback, and we will work with the EDA and the city to figure out ways of doing this efficiently that fits within the milestones that the transportation team is working with. And thanks for that. That's great. The next item I'd like to bring up in my chair's report is the question of the.
Hey, Jenna?
Oh.
I seen you, oh, never mind.
Do you still have SRT?
Yeah, just came back.
Okay, good. The next item on our exec, on our, my chair's report is the question of an executive committee. I believe that RT foreshadowed this in December at the board meeting that I wasn't able to attend because I had the flu. And so I am recommending that we establish an executive committee for this board, which would be charged with doing the work of the board in between our scheduled regular meetings. This year, we have gone to four quarterly meetings with the understanding that we may need additional meetings for, because we want to be able to continue to keep all the projects moving forward. And so in your board packet, there is a resolution, Resolution A, which lays out how this executive committee could be formed. It is, this kind of executive committee is authorized by our bylaws. If you have any specific questions, I'm sure that Ms. Lamb can answer them. I think that this will help to just ensure that our board continues to work efficiently and effectively, and that we have the right level of accountability for the main goals that we're moving forward around economic development. And I would also just like to make sure everyone understands that these executive committee meetings would be noticed and would be public meetings, just like any other, you know, be part of all of the public meeting requirements. So with that, I'm going to ask if there is a motion to, for acceptance, approval of Resolution A.
So moved.
Second.
And is there any question or comment for me or Kathleen Lamb on this topic? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much. And we will keep everybody apprised of how we're going to set this up, and we'll move forward with this right away. The last thing I want to just note is, I think it's the last thing, oh, not, no, it's not the last thing I want to note. I'm going to move now to the annual report to the legislature. In your packet, you'll find the annual report that we are required to make to the legislature by, I think it is February 15 of every year. This is a joint report from our board in the city, and I believe that the city council approved this report on Monday. Is that, is that right? Yep. And I, yep, I want to thank our, all of our outstanding staff, including the city and the EDA and Kathleen Lamb for assembling this, and would like to ask if there is a motion to approve Resolution B, which is the February 15 report to the legislature.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or comment on the report? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion prevails. The last thing I wanted to just mention, some of you may have noticed in the governor's State of the State speech, if he were here, he would say the part before I fell down. He particularly called out St. Paul, excuse me, a Rochester company called GoRoute. And I wanted to just note that GoRoute had the honor of being awarded the NFL's Most Innovative On Field Communication Tool, which is part of a competition that the NFL has set up to improve, to recognize and advance technologies that improve player safety. And so they have done really well in this competition. I'm sure there's nobody here today from GoRoute, but it's just a great example, Commissioner, Susan Ronnie is just a great example of the kind of entrepreneurial startup activity that is happening in Rochester, and I wanted to just do a call-out to them.
Excellent.
Great. With that.
Madam Chair, if I could just, I should have said this right away when you made the announcement that the governor reappointed, I'll call it the R-Team, Ryback and Ronnie, and they'll be here for a while. I'm not so sure I will be, but that's wonderful. So thanks to have the R-Team back with us for six years. Very good.
Thank you.
Big honor.
Thank you. We are now at the point in our agenda where we're going to hold a public hearing for the proposed modification of the Development District for the Alatus project located at, on Second Street. I am going to officially call to order this public hearing on this topic. And if there are members of the audience who would like to make a statement, please come forward. And I would like you also to try to keep your comments to about two minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to pass along a note from Judge Lund that I just received, and he said to remind.
Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes.
Thank you.
I am Mark Bransford. I live at 317 15th Avenue Southwest and a member of the Falwell neighborhood and a part of the Conservancy here in Rochester. He said to remind them that it's really convenient for a community member to attend a public hearing at 9:30. He is in chambers right now and could not attend, and I really wish he was here. He is my good friend and advocate along my, along with me. I had intended not to say anything because I can count votes, and I know the boundary change will happen. And I think I've said all I want to say in my post-Bulletin guest column, which I hope you've all read. And quite frankly, this development is being rammed down Falwell's throat. And if you have any doubt about that, I invite you to come to my house and go door-to-door and ask, like I have. And you will find out that it isn't just me, the squeaky wheel. There are a lot of people very concerned about the height, the density, and the traffic. That is a fact. The last time I spoke here, despite all of our efforts, one of the board member here said, "Our comments are interesting," but then ignored them. Eh, so what? I find that very disheartening. I also find it very disheartening that the Second Street Corridor Plan, a city-adopted plan that strongly suggests a height limit of six stories is being ignored, as are the draft DMC guidelines. It's an expensive cookbook, I mean, why bother spending all that money to come up with a guideline that you just ignore for the enthusiasm of having cranes in the air that you can see from Highway 52? The entire northern third of Falwell, when this thing goes in and Third Street goes in and wipes out the northern end of Falwell and takes out a boutique motel, the Raymar, it's sad. It's just really, really sad.
Are there other public, so other public comment during this public hearing? Seeing none, I now, having, seeing no more public comment, I hereby close the public hearing, and we will move to Resolution C, which is approval of the proposed modification of the Development District. And I'm going to, let's see, Ms. Lamb, can I turn to you to, maybe what I'll do is, I'll ask for a motion for approval of Resolution C, and then we can have any discussion. Is there a motion to approve Resolution C?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And now for discussion of Resolution C. Any questions about this? Any needs for? Could I just ask, I want to, I'm under the, I believe Ms. Lamb told me that this modification of the Development District, of the development outline, received unanimous passage from the city council. Is that correct?
So, yes.
Okay, great. All right. Seeing no further discussion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mayor Ryback.
Just one comment that I think we should make. I support this. I think it's a strong strategy we have. But I think to the comment we just heard from the audience and that we've heard ongoing, this does require us to think somewhat differently about parking and transportation on that. And I just want to assure people that we aren't looking at these things as individual projects in and of themselves, that if you, if you add parking there, that means we have to, for an individual project, that means we have to add less for a municipal project or a different one. And how Second is impacted as a transportation corridor will have to be impacted by this. And so these individual projects are important, but I think it's really important for us to continue to articulate that we're looking at how all of them work together, and like air in a balloon, you have to move it around a little bit so it doesn't pop. And I think this will require changes, and I think it's worth doing it because I think it's a project that will be strong.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in, oh, Ms. Ronnie, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I understand the controversy and the concern that the neighborhood has expressed. I think like what RT has mentioned, Mr. Ryback has mentioned, that there are ways to mitigate and to identify ways to lessen the traffic. Transportation will have a big impact to this, and the rest of the plan of the developmental plan may be able to accommodate some things that the neighborhood is concerned about. So I echo what Mr. Ryback has said.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mayor Ryback.
I request that you strike the balloon analogy from the record because I just thought about that a little bit and realized it's the volume of air, not where it's located in the balloon. I hope people understand.
The meeting minutes will be, we'll so note that. Thank you. All right. All those in favor.
Madam Chair.
Oh, yeah, please, Mr. Beer.
One comment. Being a local, I followed this in the paper, and I, you know, I have, I've seen a lot of the arguments for and against. One thing I'll note, and the reason I'll be voting for this, is it's not very often in the current scenario that we have a unanimous city council decision. So when I have a unanimous decision from the city council, which doesn't happen very often, I'm inclined to go with that because usually, you know, if it was 4-3 or 5-2 or something, but you don't get unanimity very often. So that's why, that's what I'm going to base my vote on.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor of Resolution C, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion prevails. Thank you. Colleagues, next on our agenda is a project update, and I'd like to welcome the city and the EDA to the table. I'm going to just see, it's really warm here. RT, can you see the, would you like to?
No, but if, I'd be, as interesting as you guys are, it'd be great if the camera was turned on the screen for a while.
Okay. That's, all right, we'll take care of that right now. Okay, welcome, and if you could, yeah, we can still see you, so, yes.
Thanks for the reminder.
Sure it doesn't leave.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board members.
We saw that.
Yeah. Good morning. Maybe if everyone could just introduce themselves, that would be awesome.
Great. This is Lisa Clark with the EDA.
And Patrick C. with EDA.
Terry Spain with City of Rochester.
Yuri Newman with the City of Rochester.
Beth Bartz with Essarup Consulting Group.
Richard Fries with the City of Rochester.
So Madam Chair, the DMC, EDA, and the city will provide updates. We know we have a very full agenda today, so we're, I wanted to make note that we have some DMC, EDA materials in your packet so that you have regular updates on the work that we don't have time to share with you today. A couple of updates, we do have a refined website that we just launched, relaunched, and I think it's very positive. We're getting very positive comments on our website ongoing and quite a bit of activity. So we've taken to heart the input that we get and continue to refine that as we move forward. We also have the McKnight-funded Energy Professional position that will start March, early March. So we're very excited to bring on Kevin Bright with us. And another staffing position, Mr. Tim Cody is our new Director of Finance and has started this year. He's three, four day, or, excuse me, this week, he's four days into his position and already neck-deep, which is great. Chateau Theatre and St. Mary's Place are moving forward, as you all know, and we'll continue to bring updates on that. And then to your, at your request, we always insert a map of the projects that are in the pipeline and an explanation of each project, and that's in your packet as well. So the updates that we have in front of you, we're going to start with the Transportation Management update. We have our colleagues, Richard Fries and our colleagues from RSP, to give the update on that in hopes for. on that in hopes for a great discussion, and there will be touch points in terms of information that this group is asking of you. So I'll turn it over to Richard.
Thank you. At your place, you have a copy of the PowerPoint that we're gonna be going through, if you'd like to follow along there for note taking. So we met with you at your last meeting, and we talked about, let's see, can you run We talked about the milestone schedule, and we've, we identified a number of milestones that were due the end of January, and those were identified there and kind of in the middle of the table, and we're here to report on those as, as promised. The, the City Council received a longer version of the presentation you're gonna receive today at their Committee of the Whole meeting back on January 24th, I'm sorry, January 23rd. And basically, at that particular time, we sought from the council, and they agreed to support five key items. Those five key items are on our agenda for you today. They're, and we're gonna be, at the end of the presentation, we'll come back to these, but these are the requested outcomes for our discussion with you today. Support for the evaluation framework, support for the circulator purpose and need, support for the circulator Tier One alternatives, support for the parking policy, and support for the city loop purpose and need. We think these four, five items are critical to keep us going in a direction that you're comfortable with. They're consistent with what we identified as outcomes or as key milestones for today. So the first of these was the, the evaluation framework. And there's a lot of information in your packet. I think it was referenced that there's over a thousand pages of documentation that's been provided to the, to the city by the evaluation teams. We boiled that down into about 120 pages in your packet, and today, we're gonna try to boil that down even further into about 35 slides. But the evaluation framework is, is very critical. It's a process, and the process entails a systematic documentation, an assessment of four evaluation accounts, the economy, community and experience, health and wellness, and a delivery mechanism. The important thing in all of this is the fact that this process will help bring all of these studies together and will provide a framework for the individual and, individual but coordinated approaches to, to this transportation issue. It provides a decision-making opportunity for the board and the council. I want to make it clear to you that the evaluation framework does not lead to a decision, a recommendation. It leads to, it provides you a format, a framework, for which you and the City Council can make informed decisions. So we find this to be very critical. It's a process issue, but we want to make sure as we're moving forward, because the individual teams are gonna start developing now their evaluation framework, all based on, again, on some consistency and uniformity related to the guiding principles that are found in the DMC plan, the visions and the goals of the DMC, but in particular, the four evaluation accounts of economy, community and experience, health and wellness, and delivery.
So can we just pause for a minute? And I'm interested in just getting input and feedback from this board on the, this overall evaluation framework. I'm sorry, unless, do you want to go through these? Because this is, these four accounts are kind of central to the evaluation framework. Do you want to talk a little bit more about those? Or did you have more to say there?
I, we provided a lot of information. I can go into them in greater detail if there are questions, but it's in, it's in your packet.
Okay.
And the information, again, explains the four, these four accounts.
Well, so let's pause then and get, I'd like to get some input and feedback from this board on this, on this evaluation framework.
In particular, I think if you refer to page 57 in your packet, it has the four accounts and a little lengthier description of, of what each of those are and how they would be applied.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, Mayor Ryback.
Could I just, just for a moment, call attention, Steve, that the, the two areas in the center, the community experience and health and wellness, I just think we should pause for a second and note how important it is to build these in and how pleased I was that they were tied to this, because we are looking at numbers and data and circulation of multi-ton vehicles around town, but we're really looking at what kind of a community do we want, and how does that fit the value of this being the healthiest city in America? And so I think bringing those into this may sound abstract right now, but I think as we go through, if we keep those two in line with the other more literal strategies here, I think it's gonna add us a lot. And that sounds like a, again, an abstract comment, but I think it'll, it'll play out over time. I'm just very happy those are held up high here.
Thank you. Ms. Ronnie.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to the city and to EDA. I think this is a very, very important subject matter, and I take it as a big responsibility on my part to make comments to the material that was presented. And I understand there's 1,001 pages of material that's been distilled from pages 55 to 170s. I'd have to look at it. And I appreciate the material that was consented to this level, but I do need more time, given that we were given this packet on Monday afternoon, and this is Wednesday. And to have a meaningful, thoughtful input, I need more time. That's personally, others may be fast readers.
Thank you. Any other comments on this evaluation criteria? Well, I'd like to just add that a couple of things that I thought were particularly good about this. I particularly am glad that you are putting people at the center of the way that we're evaluating and impacts on people rather than technology or mode or, you know, cars. Because a lot of times, we build transportation plans to figure out how to move cars around as quickly as we can, when actually what we're trying to do is to move people around efficiently and effectively. And so I think that that is a really, really strong part of this evaluation framework. And the other thing I'd like to note is that I, I think that we should all pay attention as well as the two, you know, the first three, and thank you, RT, for calling out, calling out community and experience and health and wellness. But the fourth one is delivery, which I think roots us in the practical realities of what we're trying to do here. We, our, our mission is to figure out how to take a big, bold vision and do something that is actually achievable within the time and budget constraints that we're dealing with. And I, I like the way you're laying that out here. I think that's really an important thing for us, you know, for us all to keep in mind. And then I'd like to just defer a little bit to our city colleagues, and I'm wondering if there was anything in the conversation, if not, that's fine, but if there was anything in the conversation that happened at the Committee of the Whole that you think would be helpful for this board to know, because I think we are, in general, very respectful of the role that the elected representatives of the city play in this process. Yeah, Mr. Hickey.
Yeah, I think the evaluation accounts and guiding principles, I mean, I think that generally that was well received. I think there's some minor corrections in the parking principles that Richard's gonna address later that were brought up for the City Council, but I think overall, the, the plan was well received.
Thank you. Mayor?
I'll defer to my colleague. I was absent at the meeting when it was discussed more fully, so I think, Mr. Hickey, you already covered it.
Thank you. All right, thank you. I think then we'll proceed, unless there's other comments on this particular piece, and we'll proceed to the, the integrated transit studies.
Thank you, Chair, Smith, and members of the board. What I'm going to do now is just briefly go through at a very high level, apologies to the board for the, the sickness of our presentation, but the, where each of the four transit studies are at and some key findings, conclusions, and how we're looking at these studies as integrated efforts. So first of all, beginning with the transit circulator purpose and need. Purpose and need is a baseline statement of, of why we're looking at transit service. It is a statement that if we're looking for public funding for the project or project approvals, that is a very foundational element, and so we'd like to begin with that. The purpose and need really focuses on the, the what, the who, and the why. So the what is, we want to provide high-quality downtown transportation service. The who is residents, commuters, businesses, patients, students, and visitors. And the why is, we obviously need to support not only transportation, but also economic development and livability and sustainability goals. So that is a concise statement about what we're looking to accomplish with the, the transit circulator. Also, part of that purpose and need statement is looking at the transit markets, or who are the different types of potential transit users that will, that this transit will serve, and articulating in a, in a more refined way what their particular needs are in terms of frequency of service, time of day, the number of potential transit riders in each of these markets, so that we can then right-size the transit solution. We've got three distinct markets in, in Rochester that have been identified, the first of which is Mayo passengers between St. Mary's and downtown. The shuttles that Mayo runs today serve between 3,000 and 4,000 people each day traveling between these two campuses, and that includes not only Mayo employees, but also patients and their companions. That is a very distinct transit market, and we need to look at that unique, unique situation and figure out what is the best way to serve those transit needs. We also have proposed peripheral and/or remote parking for downtown employees, both St. Mary's and to downtown proper. We need to also identify what's the appropriate transit mode to serve those markets, again, focusing on the time of day, days of the week, and the volume of, of users for that market. And then we also have this internal circulation. If we're asking folks to park once, people still need to move about during the course of their day, and it may not be directly between downtown and St. Mary's, but other parts of downtown as well, and we need to look out for those transit needs also. Moving into the Tier One alternatives, as the transit study team has looked at, what are the appropriate modes to start to address those transit needs? We're looking, we've looked at a wide range of transit modes, starting with the Transit Summit that we held earlier this fall, but we're also looking at three profiles, an elevated profile, an at-grade profile, and a below gra, below-grade profile. There are modes that are suitable for each of these profiles, and they may also serve different markets in different ways. So as we look at the elevated profile, some of the modes we're looking at are things as familiar in airports as moving sidewalks, potentially things like people movers, like you might see in Indianapolis between their housing camp, or their hospital campuses, a PRT, autonomous vehicles. At the extreme end of technology would be the Meg Lev, and that's probably something that's gonna fall off fairly quickly here, but there are a number of technologies that we are looking at in, in that elevated profile. We're also looking at surface transit solutions, which would include things like bus rapid transit, both in dedicated lanes or dedicated guideways, as well as bus rapid transit that may operate in mixed traffic. We're looking at LRT-type solutions, as well as streetcar solutions, again, that are steel-wheeled and operating within the roadways, either with mixed traffic or in their own dedicated spaces, and autonomous vehicles as well. Now, each of these modes very much interacts with vehicular traffic, interacts with pedestrians and bicyclists in downtown, and so we are carefully thinking through how those would interact with the, the parking, or the traffic operations in town, downtown, as well as creating a more livable downtown and more attractive downtown. Subterranean or below grade?
I'm sorry, just one second, Mayor Brady.
I have a question. I don't know what the status is today. It's been 15 years since I worked over there. The transportation between St. Mary's and downtown, at that time, what I recall, patients and staff did not ride the same vehicles. Is that still the case?
I, Mayor Brady, I believe that there is some separation, maybe the folks representing Mayo, Lisa's nodding her head, but there's also a very, the majority of those transit services are mixed.
It's a mix, there's a bit of a mix, but Mayo still does its shuttles, Mayor, I think what you're talking about, its shuttles from the downtown campus to St. Mary's and back for employees.
And, okay, and patient movement would be a different.
Combination, yeah.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Yes. So Mayor Brady, we, we have acknowledged that differentiation between different types of staff and the need for security and privacy, as well as transportation of documents and samples between the two campuses as well, so we're taking those factors into account. As we look at subterranean options, and this is primarily for serving that downtown to St. Mary's market, I would say, from a construction cost, we're trying to keep those options fairly simple and, and at a very feasible level, so again, looking at moving sidewalks or a tunnel that may carry autonomous vehicles. So that's a pretty wide range of alternatives and elevations. Our transit study team right now is really taking a hard look at those, as well as potential route options for each of those particular profiles or modes. Some of them are more flexible and some of them are more restrictive. I can say that the, the transit study team is very strongly looking at the north-south corridors of Broadway, Third and Fourth for these technologies. East-west, Second Street is an obvious quarter, but it also has a lot of demands on it. So we're also looking at some parallel quarters to Second Street to see how those might operate. Some things we've taken off the table are probably First and Second Avenue, they, just because of their configurations and where the key destinations are, they likely would not serve a transit market as well. So just, I can pause there for a moment and...
Mr. Hickey.
Yeah, I'll repeat some of the same comments I made at the City Council meeting. So I think early in the process, it's certainly appropriate to take a look at a, a wide range of modes, but I'd really encourage the consultants to quickly focus in on, some of the more practical modes, as opposed to some of the more exotic modes. You know, based on cost and just practicality, there's probably a pretty limited set that are gonna work downtown, and I'd just encourage to really focus time and energy on those practical methods. Thank you.
Ms. Ronnie? Thank you. Yeah, and then I'll come to you, RT.
Having been an engineer, I know there's duck unders and fly overs. They're both expensive and they both leak. So having said that, there must be some way of quickly identifying what's feasible economically, what the feds will fund based on benefits to cost ratio, and I recommend, as Mr. Hickey has suggested, narrowing down pretty quickly, so our planning time is used efficiently.
Mayor Ryback?
Madam Chair, could I, I have a follow-up. Can I first ask a question? Why are First and Second being taken off the table?
Mayor Ryback, I'm actually going to defer to Richard.
Richard? Thank you.
First Avenue in particular is being removed because of what we see as really dramatic conflicts with the Heart of the City project and what it wants to be, in working in close collaboration with the study that's ongoing there. Second Avenue really doesn't go anywhere. It, it, well, it ends at, at Methodist Hospital on the north end. It's interrupted by the Annenberg Plaza, so there's no continuous continuity there. And again, as we've had some preliminary discussions with Heart of the City and Discovery Square, there seems to be a lot of interest in using Second Avenue as a pedestrian corridor to connect those two really important projects.
Mayor Ryback?
Yeah, I understand Second Avenue. Let's talk about First for a second. And the, the, it's tough to have this conversation in a vacuum without the data you have later, which I found very, very helpful about pinch points in transportation and where traffic comes in. But there, to me, is a pretty strong argument to, to make, especially in light of the decision we just made about Second Street and its capacity and the need to move people through there. We really need to think about a north-south connection in some way. And Broadway is good, but Broadway is falling a little, little block more remote than you'd probably want to be. I think we should keep First on the table for discussion in, in a way that could actually enhance Heart of the City as opposed to disrupt it. I think there are strategies in which Heart of the City during, in that area where it is, is, has no traffic going through it, but there, there is a short connector between parking on, say, around Civic Center Drive and then coming into that point, and it's Old Rogers Field and coming back in. And I, I think there's a rush to remove that from the table that I'm not comfortable with because of two reasons, one being the need for a north-south connector, which I think is really critical, considering the decision we just made, and the second being the, there is, I think, an opportunity to use it as an asset at the Heart of the City and not the other way around. So all I ask is that you keep it on the table for, for more detailed discussion. The second thing is about, I, I understand why one would want to limit options onto what you would consider practical, but I do think that from the beginning, we've recognized... we need to have a game-changing strategy here. In some way, the only way to change the game is having some breakthrough vehicle or transportation strategy that provides someone another way to get there. So I don't want to be Buck Rogers about this. I don't want to have us go down roads that aren't going to be feasible, but the same-old, same-old ain't going to work here. So I just want to keep pushing that envelope. The final point being, I'm really happy that you're looking at subterranean transportation. I'm not just talking about like a subway. I'm talking about the idea of what Rochester calls a subway, the tunnel system, introducing some of the very effective walkway strategies you see in airports around the country, where what would be a moving sidewalk and a tunnel becomes a really great amenity. So I think all of these together can work, and I want to applaud the subterranean. I want to encourage you not to take those two other options off the table yet, in both transportation vehicle and north-south connector.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Beer?
Just some observations. I agree with pretty much everything that's been said here. However, I think right now we're sending mixed signals here. We need to start winnowing down these options. We've asked a consultant to start winnowing down these options. And then, RT, we want to add back in First Avenue. I mean, they've eliminated First Avenue, basically, from study. And I don't have a good answer. I'm not trying to cast doubt, but we're sending mixed signals. I mean, on one hand, we're saying, we got to get going, we got to start narrowing to focus, we got to pick something, but we want to keep all our options open. I'm confused. And if I'm confused, I get confused easy, but I'm not sure that we're sending the right signals here. I want to be clear, you know, what we're telling them to do.
Madam Chair?
Mayor Ryback?
Fair point, and I think the right point. I'm just saying that as I, the time I spent with the data, it argues for the fact that we've got to have a north-south connector. And we just made a decision that argues that. So I don't see another option there that makes sense. I'm more than happy to sit in a room with folks, as we just discussed, and use this data that we now finally have, only a couple of days into the data that I have, really to dig into it. And I think it'll help lead us to that. But let's use the data to take the options off the table. Let's not take the options off the table without integrating it into data. I know the planners have done that, and I recognize their professional opinion, but I believe there's some other questions that should be asked. I can see taking options off the table in two months, but let's use the data to ask the questions that I don't think are answered yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other? No, Mayor Ryback? I mean, no, we're good. Mayor Ryback? Mayor Brady? Pardon me?
Ex-former Washington Mayor Ryback.
Let me just, as I'm understanding what you're asking for here today from us, you're particularly asking, in addition to this kind of feedback, and I will just, if I could just say, I think you make a good point, Commissioner Beer, and I think the onus is on us to get together quickly to continue to discuss this with all this data that we have. And I think we can also maybe reserve the right to be of slightly mixed minds about this for a little bit longer. But I wanted to ask you, you have this circulator purpose and need statement in our PowerPoint document. Am I right that you would particularly like to understand whether you think that this kind of captures for us, if we have any specific feedback on this statement?
Correct.
Okay. So I want to just check in with the board and see if there's any, I mean, this is sort of a general purpose statement. I mean, general in a, I don't mean that in a pejorative way. I just want to see if there's any, anybody has any feedback on this for our consultants and team. Okay.
Madam Chair, you mean like in general? I have to walk down the road.
I mean, I want to, so I'm just, Mayor Ryback, just checking in on this statement of purpose and need to see if we have any feedback on that. And then, we have lots more to talk about.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Well, then, unless there are any other questions or comments right at the moment, then I'll, where would you like to lead us next? Mayor, RT, is there something else you wanted to bring up right now?
Oh, no.
Okay, great. So lead on.
Okay. Chair Smith and members of the board. Next, we want to talk a little bit about street use and operation study. And as you alluded to, this is obviously an issue of high concern. It does start to also talk about, now we're starting to get into how these things are integrated. And I'll speak to that in a moment. So portal capacity update. We've spent the fall collecting some new data and updating our understanding of current operations, particularly at key portals into downtown. Why did we feel the need to do that? The DMC plan had looked at this at a very high level using 2009 data. Given the age of that data and the amount of economic activity that's happened in the city since that time, we really felt that those traffic counts needed to be updated. So we collected that data. We also collected a finer grain, so in 15-minute increments. We expanded the timeframe that we looked at that data to have a better understanding of those peak traffic periods to 90 minutes. And then also began to incorporate signal timing in some of the actual, how do the streets operate, as opposed to just looking at numbers. So that's probably getting a lot into technical information, but it's important to understand why we felt the need to do that. And as we start to look at key portals into downtown Rochester, as you can see on the map here, the size of the triangles indicates the amount of remaining capacity during those peak hours, both coming into downtown and leaving downtown for a typical workday. What you can see here pretty quickly is most of the capacity that remains is left in the eastern side of downtown. There is very limited capacity left in the west side of downtown, and that capacity is diminishing more quickly than what we anticipated at the DMC plan. So this relates a lot to Highway 52, those portals coming in from Highway 52, where we see a lot of our employees coming into downtown Rochester are constrained. This starts to inform for us, where do we want to place those large parking reservoirs that downtown employees will be using? From a traffic standpoint, whenever we look at these types of bottlenecks, we want to, if we can, place our parking reservoirs outside of the bottleneck, so that we're reducing the volumes of cars coming in on those streets. That starts to shift our thinking a bit away from some of the parking locations that were identified in the DMC plan, particularly as it relates to Civic Center Drive, but also from the Second Street and other, the southern portal from the west into downtown. So we really want to start looking now at parking opportunities that are outside of that constrained area, maybe placing more emphasis on parking areas that might go to the east side of downtown, maybe looking more towards the fairgrounds or to the north. Maybe these, some of these parking reservoirs need to be a little more remote, meaning they're not walkable into downtown as opposed to peripheral. So this is the data that our study teams are digging into currently. And then, based on where those employee parking reservoirs are located, that also starts to affect that second market that we just talked about in terms of transit service, that transit service that gets folks from these reserved parking locations to their downtown employment location. We need to both set those routes and the mode types so that they appropriately respond to that.
Mayor Ryback?
A question about this, and this is super helpful information. This is what we've been looking for. Question about the methodology on this. You're looking at total volume. I don't see time factored into that, meaning, especially, I mean, I think the most significant pinch point it seems to be is where 52 comes into Civic Center Drive, and it seems as if there's high volume from both 52 and from west. I don't yet know whether that is a morning commute-only issue. It would be helpful to know, if we did know at all, how much of that was work commuting consistently, how much of it was volume to the clinic itself. So for instance, do all clinic people come in at the beginning of the day, which I understand is a lot of it? But building time into that matters. The second question is, it was interesting in the data about growth, that it showed that the north and the northwest both had high growth. But if I understood it right, it showed there was significant additional growth coming in on 52, but not that heavy a growth coming in from the west. Am I correct on that?
Your second question, first, you are correct. The growth continues to be to the north and to the west, more so than other directions.
But more to the north than the west?
Yes.
Okay. And then the second thing about time?
The time. So actually, it's possible that in the information that's in your packet, there was the breakdown of the traffic volumes by 15-minute segments. Okay, it was not in your packet. I take that back. But we can provide that. We have it collected. We have it in tabular form. We have it in graphic form. We can share that with you to show it.
Is the issue a morning and evening rush hour, or is it all day?
It's a morning and evening rush hour. I purposely, before today's meeting, came through the Civic Center Drive intersection on the way to work at 7:40, and we were backed up halfway onto the off-ramp, and the Second Street was backed up all the way into the through lanes on 52. So it is a morning commute primarily. We also have a similar problem exiting the community, but that's more internal and not external to the freeway. So one thing that we have to do is we have to further break down the data. And I've been in communications with the Mayo staff to see if, in fact, they can break down, in their parking facilities, those people arriving between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM, as to the number of people in the Mayo parking facilities, as to, are the employees or patients? So again, trying to break that number down even further, is this an employee commute issue primarily, but how much of it is related to patients who have appointments between, in that same competing peak hour period?
That's really helpful, because I think one of the things is, you know, parking, especially, you know, is a lot of things, but it's also a marketing strategy. And you can obviously market more directly to the employee than the other. So I think that's going to be extremely important. One more detailed question, if I could. As I remember from my briefing, there was a, the Civic Center Drive had less capacity than we thought, but it's especially acute once you get to Third, Second, and especially Broadway, that it's, that we had been working, I think, on the assumption that you bring people in Civic Center Drive all the way to the convention center. You're saying it's tough already. It's tougher significantly once you cross Broadway. Is that right?
Mr. Freeze?
No, actually, the pinch point, to use your term, is at Civic Center Drive and 16th Avenue, the first signalized intersection off of Highway 52. That's the pinch point. Once the traffic--
Pretty spontaneous, Albi?
I'm sorry?
I just said, is everybody going to the bakery?
Yeah.
No, once the traffic--
That's where I go.
Once the traffic is regulated through there based on the signal cycle, the flow of traffic easterly into the downtown actually works fairly well in the morning. It's just that there's that first pinch point, that first traffic signal, that really is what backs up the free-flow traffic off the freeway. And that's not a problem that's unique to Rochester. It probably is almost in every single location that you drive through, is that first traffic signal is the one that creates the most congestion. And once the traffic is regulated or metered through there by the signal timing, it tends to flow better.
So I'm sorry, with one more question, if I could, but this is an important point. So there's a signalization option here, where it's not just volume, that there could be a strategy with signalization and flow through there that could mitigate this a little bit.
We regularly update the signal progression timing pattern for that corridor, and it was, I think, as recently as last year, last spring, it was adjusted again. So we're doing what we can to regulate, try to improve the overall flow in the corridor. So once you get that green light, you're able to move through several intersections without having to stop again. It's just that first one, there's a certain period of time where it's a red ball condition, and traffic needs to stop.
Thank you. Mr. Hickey?
Yeah, just some comments on portal capacity. One of the planning assumptions for the DMC plan is that essentially, for the most part, we've got kind of the capacity that we're going to have for vehicle traffic, especially as we get into the downtown area and right-of-way and such. And that is really the emphasis on multimodal transportation, and I think that's certainly appropriate. But some of the concepts that we saw pitched at the City Council included concepts where we're eliminating vehicle lanes in the area. And I just want to make sure, I think there's a difference between recognizing that we can't expand necessarily or easily the vehicle lanes that we currently have, as opposed to artificially choking them down, you know, perhaps to punish drivers for driving vehicles downtown. So I think we really need to have methods of encouragement for multimodal transportation to make it convenient so that people want to do this. And I just want to make sure we don't unnecessarily choke down vehicle lanes to punish vehicle drivers.
Thank you. Mr. Beer?
I've got several observations. One, I would agree with Mr. Freeze. The traffic northwest is key. I mean, everything's coming in from northwest, but I don't want to be, I don't want to leave the impression, I don't think Richard meant to do this either, coming in from the west in the morning is tremendous. I mean, it's a steady, it's a two-lane, Highway 14. It's steady cars. If you're trying to get in on that road in the morning, you can't get in. And when you go home at night, you know, whenever, 5:00 or something, it's tough. That freeway or Highway 14 is loaded. It can't take much more capacity, in my opinion. I'm not a traffic engineer. The bulk, like Mr. Freeze said, coming from northwest, coming down 52, but it's not to be little, and I don't think, again, that he tried to do that. But westerly is, it's not as bad, but it's pretty darn close, and I think the traffic studies would show that. Couple other things, I'm a little bit in agreement with Mr. Hickey here. You know, we need to add, I understand we need to add different varieties of transportation to the extent that we can without subtracting other modes. And what I'm getting at there is, you know, if we want to put more bike racks on buses so people can bike or get on the bus, you know, and then throw their bike and be able to bike, that's great. I don't think the answer, in my humble opinion, is to eliminate existing traffic lanes to have other modes of transportation. I don't think it's realistic to think that the number of cars coming into Rochester is going to go down. We can try and slow the growth, but I think we're misleading ourselves if we think we're going to eliminate what, you know, if the count is 1,000 cars a day coming in, that we're going to go down in that number anytime soon. So to the extent that we can add bike lanes, add walking lanes, add bus routes or circulator routes, great, but not at the expense of subtracting traffic lanes. And we have done that. We did that out on Second Street from the Mayo Credit Union West, that used to be a four-lane road, two lanes each way, and now it's a one-lane road with a middle lane to the turn lane in the middle. I don't think that's the right thing to do. And I'm sorry if I offend some people's sensibilities, but we eliminated an existing traffic lane. And I'm not talking, I want to be clear, because sometimes this thing gets wound around in reports. I don't think we should eliminate existing lanes. We should add things, but not at the expense of eliminating existing lanes. So does everybody understand that?
Ms. Roney?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and the members of the board. I just want to take off on what RT said later about the gurneys, that RT and I were going to be taken out by gurneys by the year 2023. Now, the transportation will be in existence for the next 50 years. And I ask you to think of a couple of things. One is, who's going to work 50 years from now? Who are you trying to attract to this community? I don't think it's you and me. Mr. Beer?
Clearly, I can tell you right now, it's not going to be me.
So how do we go about making a flexible mode options, so, like these bicyclists? Because millennials want a bike. I've seen in other cities, they want a bike, they want multimodal options. So if we want to attract the smart, innovative young people, you're going to have to have some bikes, and it may be at the cost of cars.
See, Susan, that's where I disagree, and I think this is a key discussion I think we need to have, and we need to have it, I mean, you and I can have it respectfully, but sometimes people in our community don't want to talk about that. My, and you may be right. I don't have, I mean, I'm not always right, but I don't-- but I don't think in the next 50 years, again, I'm just throwing out a number, if we have 1,000 cars using Civic Center Drive, I don't think we're going to go down to 999 or less. I think we'll still have 1,000 cars 50 years from now. And, you know, there'll be a lot more people riding bikes. I don't disagree with you there, but I don't, that's why I don't think we should eliminate those lanes, but I mean, this is a discussion I like to have.
Right, I agree with you, and I'm going to get you a bike before my board-
Lord knows I need it, I mean, look.
You may have 2,000 cars wanting to drive that Second Street, so then what? We've done studies on I-94 when I was part of MNDAT, Minnesota Department of Transportation. You needed to take out, in order to satisfy the traffic that's going along 94, you needed to take out five lanes, additional lanes on either side. That meant lots of buildings, lots of homes, in order to accommodate vehicles. So I just put it out there for your thoughts.
And this is good. I think this is a discussion we need to have, you know, in our smaller groups so that we can give clear direction, because, I mean, we obviously have a difference of opinion.
I'll get your bicycle again. My second point is that RT talked about, Mr. Ryback talked about new technologies. You have very capable consultants that could speak to new technology that's in the works or will be in the works very soon, within the next three to five years. And I think it's incumbent upon SRF and its consultant team to really look at that driverless car, autonomous traffic that can improve the throughput in the existing traffic lanes. So those are my two cents worth.
Yep, Mr. Fries?
Madam Chair, we've jumped ahead to a slide that I had at the very end to, because I think it's really key to the conversation we're having. And I want to make it really clear that we're not talking an either-or situation. This slide, this graphic is meant to show the fact that you can, if you can take 60 cars off the road, just 60, and put those drivers in a bus, and you do that a couple times, maybe five buses or 10 buses, it gets to the point that we're talking about, it's not either-or, it's not all one or the other. We have, we have a peak hour traffic concern. We don't have a problem yet, but we have peak hour traffic concerns right now. We're approaching capacity. We have two ways to approach that. The conventional approach has been, and Ms. Ronnie worked for an agency whose this, their approach is build more capacity, more lanes, whether they're through lanes or turn lanes. The alternative approach is to provide alternative modes. So if we can provide five, you know, three bus, two buses to haul those 60 people instead of another travel lane that's there all day long, 24 hours a day, 365, and is only used for an hour out of each day, where's our better investment? That's the approach we're taking in this thing. It's not all or nothing, it's not one or the other, it's a combination. And that's part of this paradigm shift. It's going to have to happen over time, because people aren't going to give up their vehicles tomorrow, and they're not going to give them up-
Maybe I'm framing it wrong, but I agree with you.
No, go ahead, I'm not stopping you.
But I agree with you, but again, I say if we have 1,000 cars coming in, I'm just using that number, I don't know, it's 50,000, whatever it is, and we're going to add 20,000 jobs in the next 20 years, or whatever the number is we're throwing around, okay? To take, I'm not saying we got to build more traffic lanes, I'm not saying that. I mean, we may have to, but I'm not saying that. I'm saying to take existing traffic lanes, where we have two traffic lanes or four traffic lanes, and to convert them to a bus lane or a bike lane or a walk lane, I don't think is the right approach, because that number of cars isn't going down anytime soon. I mean, unless we, you know, say, you can't drive downtown anymore. You're right, people are married to their vehicles. I'm married to my vehicle, I'm not afraid to say that. Whether it's wrong or right, I don't know. But if we think that we're going to have a total number of cars coming into downtown Rochester, and it's going to go down, it's going to go down from what we're doing to now, to what we do today on February 8th in 2017, and we got 50,000 cars coming downtown, that that's going to go down to 46,000 if we put in, you know, more bike lanes or bus lanes or whatever we do, I think that's wrong. I think we will continue to have 50,000 cars, the same number. It may grow. We should encourage people not to come downtown, because I agree with you, we can't handle more traffic downtown, we can't have more parking downtown. But I don't think we can make the gross number go down. I don't think we can.
Could I just ask, do your planning assumptions assume increased traffic into downtown Rochester, the same amount of traffic or less traffic over time? Car traffic?
The DMC plan has a goal. Our studies are being done consistent with that goal.
Right.
The goal is to get from a 70% single occupant vehicle mode split right now to 50%.
Right.
That's 50% of the future. Okay, so that's reducing from the 50,000 cars that are today and also from the cars of the future. Because the other part of this is that if there's no place for people to park downtown, they're not going to drive into downtown. And can we afford to build parking garages at $30,000 a parking stall for, that will last for 50 years when we may not even be driving cars 30 years from now? So I mean, that's, so we talk about autonomous vehicles. There's a lot of analysis out there right now about in building a parking garage, are you making it convertible? Convertible for the perspective that you can convert the space to some other use in the future when all of a sudden it's sitting empty or partially empty because nobody's driving their cars anymore? So there's a lot of dynamics going on here, trying to, because again, what we're looking at, the DMC is, plan is a 20-year plan. Our vision is beyond 20 years. As engineers, we build things to last more than 20 years. So whether it's roads, or whether it's parking garages, or whatever it is, we have to think beyond that. What, how will the system that we ultimately provide a recommendation to you and you adopt, or whatever it is you adopt, how does that transcend beyond the 20 years? How is it in the community's best interest to make a significant investment over the next 20 years for a technology that may be obsolete?
Mr. Hickey? And then, please go ahead, maybe we might try to move on then from here.
Thank you, and I think your slide illustrates some good points.
Yes, RT, just Marcus speaking, and then I'll come to you.
I did have a question on the far-right picture on the slide. Do you know, was that taken in February, or what month was that taken in?
I don't even know where it's taken, to be honest with you, I don't know.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Ryback?
I just wanted, just a quick comment. This issue of autonomous vehicles winds up paralyzing these transportation conversations a lot. And, you know, like, what do we do because we don't know what's happening? Is, I would understand it, from the little I know about this, there are two major implications. One is, and Susan mentioned it, that if we have more autonomous vehicles, it will increase our throughput, meaning that congestion at the light at 16th will ease up. The second is that the construction of the parking ramp has to have flat floors instead of raked floors, so that it could be converted to office. Those are two major things we can do. It's not as if we don't know some of these things we can do. I just want to get to that so that we're not paralyzing ourselves by saying we can't do anything, because everything's going to change.
Right, thank you. Yep, Ms. Ronnie?
I have a quick comment. This will be music to Lisa Sears. I'd say education and informing the public about, you know, sometimes you can't change the physical layout, but at the same time, you could inform the public about the availability of parking spaces as they come in on Second Street. It's about letting the public know, especially those that are residents, look at all amount of carbon footprint we're saving by not driving. Think about, think about how to strategize such that if you can't save money by expanding and putting additional lanes, then you look at public outreach. And that needs to happen over time and time and time again. And I think what Mr. Fries said, I'm in agreement with him entirely. They've done a great job of identifying the future. Now it requires education and informing the public, and getting informed consent from the public that they will ride buses, they will ride bus, rapid bus, or tuck-over and duck under, and bicycles for Mr. Beer.
Colleagues, if I could suggest that we, I think this has been great conversation, but if we can move into the next part of your presentation, I think that would be great, if that's okay with everyone. Yes, please, go forward.
Chair Smith and Ms. Ronnie, you actually just provided me with the best transition, because now we're going to talk about parking, but also travel demand management, which is a lot of the measures that you were just speaking to, whether it's identifying where parking spaces are located, wayfinding, where can you avoid congested routes, encouraging from a positive sense about why we should look at alternative modes rather than a punishment sense, you must. But all those things are feeding into factors that we're looking at right now in strategies. We are also creating models that will help us anticipate what those future traffic volumes are and look at the trade-offs between, say, taking vehicular lanes, trying to encourage more transit use, what can we anticipate in terms of bike or ped use during certain amounts of time or years of the month? We can test all those scenarios and get a better idea. As I go into parking, I just want to speak to one fact here that Kim Lee Horn did do an assessment of Rochester's existing parking program, and especially in terms of its relationship to transit. They use this program that they use across the nation, 20 Characteristics of Effective Parking Programs. They've used it in many, many different cities. Rochester ranked at the top of their medium-sized cities in terms of what Rochester is already doing to manage parking and integrate transit, positioning that as an enterprise fund and something that works to enhance economic development. So we should be proud of what Rochester has already been able to accomplish. Parking is already in very high demand. Ask any Mayo employee downtown, and they'll tell you they wait decades to get a parking spot downtown. So there are already a lot of those mechanisms in place, so we're starting from a great foundation. As we again look at this portal capacity issue and the relationship to parking, we've talked about that a bit. The sort of fuzzy orangish clouds that you see on this image are areas that our parking team is currently looking at in terms of locations for key parking facilities downtown. There are many tools in the toolbox that we have to address these portal capacity issues. One is to capture more vehicles outside of that portal, to consolidate folks in either carpools, car sharing, autonomous vehicles, transit, et cetera. So we're bringing fewer vehicles into downtown. We can look at operating the network more efficiently. We can look at expanding that network. Maybe we need to add some vehicular lanes in key spots so that we're opening up that flow. So this is an integrated network that we are looking at. In terms of parking or the travel management authorities, what our overall approach is, we're really looking at access, getting people access to downtown, not necessarily vehicle access to downtown. So we're really trying to focus on how do we get people in a way that is enjoyable, that adds to livability, and give them an enhanced quality of life, not putting them in a transportation situation where it's actually harder to get downtown, because that will be counterintuitive to our economic goals. We're looking at transportation demand management, encouraging this access through programs and/or incentives that use multiple travel modes and make it easy to make the choice not to drive. And as Richard was referring earlier to, looking at those modal shift targets, and how can we meet those targets so that we can again create a downtown that functions well? The parking team has asked that we get your feedback regarding eight key parking policies that they would like, if this is in the right direction where we want to take the parking program for Rochester, they will then take these broad policies and develop a more specific and customized program for Rochester. And let me run through them quickly, they're explained in more detail in your packet. Number one is to maintain ownership of parking assets and grow the system. What does that mean in terms of public, the city of Rochester and owning parking assets? They recommend about 40% is the right spot where the city can have that control that really starts to set the stage for how parking is managed in downtown, so it's not 100% ownership, but by having a substantial share, then the city can influence how the parking systems operate. Secondly, to set an expectation of a five-to-one return on those parking investments. Again, as Richard said, those investments are really expensive, and they need to be used well and get a good return. Three, to strongly support the concept of shared parking. We don't need to build separate parking facilities for parking spaces that are going to be used eight to five, and then those that are going to be used on evenings and weekends. Let's look at building parking facilities that can be shared across those time periods to leverage parking investment to support new development opportunities. So how can parking start to really support our economic development goals? And how do we incentivize that? Number five, to support a consolidated parking management organization, so there's an entity who is looking at the broad parking picture and rightsizing those incentives to both get the, accomplish the goals that we wanted and do that in an effective and customer-friendly way. Two, six, develop a robust parking planning function, and they are working on a tool that will assist us in doing that, which I'll speak to in a moment. Seven, to create a balanced and sustainable community access strategy. So again, how does this evolve over time? We don't know what's going to happen in the next 50 years as technologies like autonomous vehicles come onboard. So we have to, we have to be nimble, and how do we create that strategy that allows us to do that over time? And number eight, to promote a Park Once approach for downtown Rochester. Commissioner Hickey, I think this addresses the change that you were looking for. But Park Once is really looking for that opportunity for those who are coming from farther out to just drive to one location and leave their vehicle there during, throughout the course of their day, understanding they may have very, a number of places they need to go. And do that with integrating good urban design principles, not only from a physical standpoint, but also that things function well in an urban environment.
So let's pause there, and I'd like to see if there's feedback or comments on all of this. Commissioner Beer?
At the risk of being a curmudgeon, can you go back to goal one there? Just back up a slide?
Sure.
Okay, you know, I said that, and I got kind of scolded, I think almost, that we're not going to, I said 1,000 cars or 50,000 cars are coming in. And I think I got told in so many words that we really want to crank down the number of cars coming in, it won't be as big as it is today. If that's true, and I don't think it is, but if it is, why are we talking about growing the system? Those two things don't work in my mind. I'm saying we're going to have at least as many vehicles tomorrow as we do today in 20 years in the future coming into downtown, private automobiles. That's why I don't want to eliminate, again, existing, key word, existing lanes. But I think I got scolded saying, no, no, we're going to, somehow we're going to have less cars coming down, then why are we growing the system? I'm confused.
And the system is very broad here, and it ties to a lot of the other points.
But it's about parking.
Right, it's number three, for example. So growing the system means growing the system that you are, we're sharing parking. So in the Alatus project or some of the other projects, there may be a portion of that parking that is public, but the city's not building a public parking garage.
I got that, but you're growing the system. Growing the system means there will be more cars to park. In order for there to be more cars to park, there's got to be more cars coming downtown. And I think I just got told that we're trying to get less cars coming downtown.
Mr. Hickey, did you want to say something?
So I think what I understood Mr. Fries to say was that percentage was going to go down, and I think he recognizes that it's going to be a percentage of a larger number. So I think there's a recognition that the vehicles will grow. The mode shift references a percentage change, recognize that the overall number of vehicles is likely to go up.
But back to my point is, I'm talking, we're talking about a- But, but back to my point is, I'm talking, we're talking about dropping existing lanes, existing traffic lanes, eliminating them. And that has happened, it is happening now.
So, Board Member Beer, I think there, the complexity of travel in downtown and parking is maybe looked at through a slightly different lens. So, when we're talking about constraints on traffic operations, we're really looking at peak hour, which is primarily an employee market, employees who are coming into downtown and leaving downtown. We also, we have a different parking market, if you will, that also is serving visitors and patients downtown. So, while at, at one level, we're trying to diminish the number of vehicles coming downtown for folks who are just commuting in or out of downtown, at the same time, we're recognizing as Mayo and other businesses expand in downtown, they still will have needs for maybe short-term parking, visitor parking, that is not directly related to that peak hour traffic operations timeline. So, it is, it is complicated, and we are looking at ways that we can break down those different markets and those different time periods of the day, to right size the entire system, so that it, it works from a traffic standpoint, that it works from parking and who needs to access downtown, and we're really focusing that around those, those measures and taking those markets into consideration.
Well, can we, okay, apparently, it's too complicated for me to comprehend. Can you just tell me why we are currently eliminating existing traffic lanes now? I don't understand that. Somebody tell me that.
Could I jump in on this?
Simple answer is...
Mayor Ryback, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, yeah. Jim, I understand that you, Madam Chair, and Jim, I understand the issue you have with second on the other side of 52, and that's a local issue, and, you know, have that conversation. I don't, at this point, hear anybody necessarily saying to remove lanes or not. I also don't hear anyone assuming, I certainly haven't, that we're going to have fewer cars coming into Rochester. The split has to be different. We have to get dramatically more not being in vehicles, because we're going to just have more people coming into town. But I think we have to work on the assumption, and I think as we get these numbers, maybe we can change it, we have to work on the assumption that we're going to have the same number of cars coming into town. We'll be lucky if that's the case. If we do a really good job, the city grows and we don't dramatically grow the number of people coming into town, but we're going to have the same amount. So, I, I don't think we need to have that argument yet. I totally get your point. I do think one of the things that you're thinking about this is that the old way of doing bike lanes was to take the busiest street and to take a car lane and use it for bikes. That may happen here, but the better idea that I see coming, and I've heard talked about, is to borrow from what Indianapolis did, which is to use some of the capacity on some of the lower volume streets to come into this area by having more of a trail that meanders. You don't have to move bikes in a straight line. I think we can come to that conversation. So, I definitely hear what you're saying, but, but we don't have to make this as an either or. The, the point I want to pivot off that is, I'm super happy with every one of these points here, and think that it's incredibly strong to be thinking this way about managing what we have. We're not just building, managing it. And I think the, the best idea that I see up here is on the second screen, I think it was number six, but it was the, the traffic, the parking management system, which allows us to have a management entity that works on this ongoing. There's been something like that in downtown Minneapolis for many years on transit. They never got that aligned with parking ramps, and we could have done a dramatically better job. So, I just want to applaud all this work. I think this, this, this strategy makes a ton of sense.
Councilmember Hickey, did you want to?
Yeah. Madam Chair, earlier, you had asked about some of the thoughts of the City Council, since we had received this same presentation in a little bit more detail, and I think the ask here today on this particular section is the same of the City Council, looking for kind of an affirmation of the eight recommended parking policies. And there was the one modification to, to policy number eight, just to kind of clarify what was really meant, and to make sure it aligned with the DMC transportation principles. But other than that one change, these were very well received by the City Council and had strong support.
Thank you. Ms. Ronnie?
Yes. I'm just, this is a matter of semantics, I think. On page two, page two, upper PowerPoint, it indicates, I'm sorry, that's not it, wrong page. On page four, maybe I missed this, circulator purpose and need statement, you wanted the board consent, or the board's, board's consent, or board's saying that this is right consideration?
Support is the word.
Support, thank you very much, for sure. And then you have the parking policies on page 10. I'm wondering if that also needs to be needs and assessment? You know, maybe I'm missing something here. One says purpose and need, purpose and need statement, and the other one says parking policies. Could you help me understand the difference?
I think the, the primary difference is the potential source of funding. So, if we go through state or federal funding processes, we need a definitive purpose and need statement, and the policies basically say, you need to develop that statement early in your study evaluation. You can't do all your study and then decide what your purpose and need is. So, both from the, the city loop, which we'll be talking about here in a minute, and for the circulator, those are the two that we've identified as, would have the best opportunity to secure either state or federal funding.
Ms. Ronnie?
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I would like to just say that I am also very pleased with this, with the parking policies that you have drafted here, and I'm particularly happy about the, looking at parking investments as a, as the, as a kind of investment that you want to get a return on, and I really am excited about this five to one return. I agree with RT, when the development plan recommended also the kind of a consolidated parking management organization, that made tons of sense to me, particularly in a community that has, you know, that is going to be growing, that is growing and changing so rapidly, and has a dominant employer that has such a significant impact on the, kind of the parking infrastructure in the community. And so, I think, I, I think that we're on the right track, and I, and I, I say that while being very respectful of the issues that Commissioner Beer is raising, which is that we're, we're trying to figure out how to manage growth in a way that is, that we can afford, that's sustainable, and, and that is probably not going to mean that we're going to have less cars. It means that we're going to manage the growth in cars in a way that doesn't turn every spare bit of downtown Rochester into a parking ramp. Mr. Freeze?
Madam Chair, just for the record, I think it's important to note that Mayo Clinic, for longer than when TMA and TDM were acronyms that would appear in, in reports and, and studies, has had in place a very, very effective travel demand management program in-house. And they've run it in-house, and they've done a tremendous job. If they didn't have that in place, the mountain would be a lot taller, the, the climb would be a lot more difficult. The primary focus in these studies is going to be the other 10,000 employees downtown that are not Mayo employees. We're working in collaboration and conjunction with Mayo all the time on issues related to parking and transit. But the fact that they've got a program in place already for their 28,000 employees that work downtown, makes this mountain a lot more scalable from, from our perspective.
Thank you. So, with the consent of this board, I'm going to try to move us along to the last, the last bit here.
Yes, Madam Chair, the last bit here is city loop purpose and need. Again, this is an element that was brought forward in the DMC plan, and we're trying, we are, have proposed a succinct statement of what the city loop is intended to accomplish, sort of creating that shared vision. So, city loop is a branded, accessible, high-quality, year-round walking and biking facility designed to promote health, both physical and mental, and attract development. Now, this has evolved as we've been paying attention to the heart of the city work, and what they've seen from their studies of both downtown employees, as well as Mayo patients, and what they're looking for in terms of areas where they can actively recreate or have more contemplative time in the city, and how does the city loop then expand on those, on that research, and really develop into a, a broader downtown-wide facility that has some of those same goals? So, in terms of, that's where we're really starting to get to the, the promote health, we're promoting that physical health, but also that respite need that, that folks may need. We really do want this to be a year-round facility, and some of those aspects really start to drive the design and how we approach the location, the appropriate locations for the city loop trail. Our potential users here, we anticipate being not only Rochester residents, downtown and DMC area employees, but also visitors, patients, and those patient companions. So, it's a very broad mix. In order to appeal to all of those users and accomplish that, that mission statement that stated at the, at the top of the screen there, we're looking to design a trail that is convenient and accessible to those high-activity areas in the DMC zone. We are trying to connect both energize, energizing, and also reflective places. We want this to be recognizable as a key element of Rochester's downtown. We want it to be welcoming to all users, and we want it therefore to be ADA accessible.
Thank you. Questions, comments, feedback, colleagues on this? Mayor Ryback?
Yeah, this, I think, is extremely exciting, and I think the model for it is the cultural corridor in Indianapolis, which revolutionized the way we think about this. And I think that the good news about this is, this is how we, if we connect this up with the conversation we were having previously, for instance, we have to find an attractive, relatively direct way for a biker to get from, say, a parking facility at 52 and 14, into the core of town, so that we can attract somebody to park out there. We, we're thinking about remote parking, we also have to think about this, and we have to think about the experience of someone at the clinic who discovers to their amazement that, within a short bike ride of the downtown, you can go to see an eagle's nest. I mean, all of this ties together. It's a transportation strategy, it's, and it's, it's also an attraction strategy. So, I'm really happy we're thinking about this, and I predict this will be the sleeper of our transportation strategy, that's going to really not completely solve, but sure help some of these issues that seem pretty thorny right now.
Thank you. Other comments on this? All right.
All right.
All right. So, let me just do it, yeah, please.
We can quickly breeze through the remainder of the slides, I'm sure you're concerned about time.
I'm a little concerned about time, but I don't want to short circuit any conversation that people want to have, so why don't we, we have, it looks to me like we have about 15 or 16 more slides, so...
I can go very quickly.
Okay.
All right. So, this is also at your, your places, this map. What we wanted to show here is, we are looking at those ADA compliance issues. This is likely going to mean some adjustments to the route that was identified in the DMC plan, because in some areas of the route, we have some significant grades. So, just a quick update on work that that group is doing. As I stated earlier, our study teams are also creating some tools that will be very helpful for the city and the EDA as we move forward. One is this Park Plus model, which creates a database of available parking facilities in downtown, and what the utilization of those facilities are, it links it to a 3D model. So, this will allow us, as more parking facilities come online or are proposed, that the tool can be used to feed that new information then into this model, see how the traffic system itself will adjust and allow for better planning in regards to parking. We're also developing a block assessment tool that looks at each of the blocks in downtown, and assessing what there is in terms of public right of way, and how that public right of way is used. You have one spreadsheet at, one example spreadsheet for one block face of downtown that looks at the, that illustrates the information that's being gathered. Again, this will be an ongoing tool that the city can use as it looks at development in downtown. We are also creating a 3D model, and as opposed to being just a static 3D rendering, this is actually a model that you can move around and through and zoom in on, get down at a pedestrian level, get up as if you were the referenced eagle flying over the city, so you can really use it in many ways. It will be a smart model that captures utility information, building as, information about the buildings in downtown as well. So, it really is a three-dimensional, if you will, GIS system that captures building, public utilities, the underground tunnels, et cetera, in a way that the city really hasn't been able to be modeled before. This is something that we can then use to test some of the options that we'll be coming up with in the coming months, both to understand them visually, you know, how physically do they affect the environment, but we can also link in our, our traffic models to show how these systems actually operate, or these options would operate from a, a traffic aspect as well.
So, in this particular example, this is Fourth Avenue Northwest. I believe that's the Graham or the Damon ramp there in the background, and if you look just beyond the bus shadow, or in the area of the bus shadow, you'll notice that we took a parking lane and converted it to a protected two-way bike lane on the existing Fourth Avenue, no additional right of way required. So, again, it's, it's one of the things that we're looking at, is how to reuse the existing right of way and provide alternative modes. So, we've took away parallel parking spaces that are parked full all day long, with people plugging the meters and other things like that, and converted it to, and this is how we use this model, to show how that could be used for a two-way protected bike lane.
So, just some key findings to date, and you can read these in your packet, so I don't need to read through them all. But our work is showing that the DMC plan remains a very solid framework for planning. Some couple things that we're looking at refining coming out of that plan. As I talked about, the multiple transit markets before, earlier, we may need some multiple circulator types. We may find that there isn't one solution that fits all of those needs, but we are going to tailor those to the specific needs of Rochester. We're also, we talked quite a bit about porting locations, and we need to think about that, how affects, how that would affect the DMC plan. As Richard stated earlier, we have in place already a very effective TMA through the Mayo Clinic, but we have 10,000 downtown employees that are not currently served, therefore, we're looking at travel demand management strategies. The city loop holds, as RT was referring to, a potential to be a transformative element for downtown Rochester. And we're adjusting though, that vision to make the accessible for those with limited mobility, and incorporating some of the heart of the city's findings. We did present a great deal of this information to the public on January 24th. We had 150 or so in attendance, in addition to the, the staff and consultants who were there. We also engaged a lot of people using social media, which was very effective, as you can see through some of the numbers here. Comments we received were all over the board, and again, we weren't showing them specific options, we were more engaging them in conversation about some of the same issues you've been talking about today. So, here's just a taste of those comments that we heard. More detailed summaries will be coming in the next week or so. And with that, we can talk about some upcoming milestones.
Why don't you go to the next? So, again, the, the milestone schedule that we showed you at the beginning, so we've talked today about the deliverables that were, were due in January. We're moving forward now, and again, with hopefully your support for the five items that will, that we've talked about today, we will continue to move in a direction such that the, the May milestones can be met. We would anticipate, based on the conversation earlier, that we would potentially then have a workshop sometime possibly in May, that would coincide with the timeline that we have set up here for our deliverables. That's yet to be worked out as far as a date, but we really welcome and appreciate that opportunity to have these kind of conversations in a, maybe a little less formal, but more of a workshop or working group situation.
Thank you.
And then, I've showed you this, and then my... And then I've showed you this, and then my last slide is.
Richard, if I, excuse me.
Yes.
If I could just comment on that, just getting back from India, they would take all three of those pictures and overlay them. They're all together, plus add cattle and monkeys and minimal street traffic lights that they don't pay attention to anyway, and they don't have any accidents. I don't know how it happens.
So again, on a requested outcomes, Chairman Smith, you made reference to these as we went along. So again, whatever the board's pleasure is here, this really helps give us our marching orders moving forward to the May deliverables. If there's the ability for the board at this particular time to support what you've heard, what you've seen, and in part, what you've read, that would really be appreciated.
Thank you. Mayor Ryback? Did you want to? Oh, sorry.
Just a final comment on the whole area when we're ready for that.
Okay. Well, I'm not going to ask for a formal vote or anything like that at this point. I'm going to rely on this conversation. I think that, and I welcome final comments from my colleagues, I think that you have heard support with some really important follow-ups that we want to have on the basic things that you laid out here today. I invite people to disagree with me if I'm not capturing, I mean, at a very high level, the nature of the conversation that we've just had, which is, but I'm not going to ask for a formal, I want everyone to know, I'm not going to ask for a formal vote today. But any further comment on this?
I would just say it's impressive, and thanks to the hard work that's already been done. And as you heard, there's some further discussion that'll take place. But I think it's a good effort and a great effort, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor Ryback?
I would, as somebody who has been hungry for the details we need to make these decisions, I feel like it's Thanksgiving dinner. It's 8:00 p.m., and I passed out on the couch. But it's, but this is great. This is real progress. This is what I certainly have been pushing for, so thank you for this. I'm really looking forward to digging in more with you and having a working session as soon as possible. And toward the point of immediacy, let's do that soon. And if offline I give comments or bat things around with the consultants or whatever, I'll do what it takes to get that done. Two quick top-line points, and then I'll move on. Number one is the issue in this idea of parking management. I want us to get our heads around what the experience is for people who aren't commuting. How much do we need to leave open for people coming in during the midday? And that's a retail and a restaurant issue and other business issue. It's also something where, and I know you've been talking to Mayo, obviously, but I think we all need to get some understanding of the retail experience of Mayo. It's a little different, I would imagine, from a traditional hospital. More people, I assume, come for a full-day visit, which is more like a commuter than a person who stops in for a few hours. I don't think we need to get into that right now, but I think we need to build that into this as well. If you looked at this data just in a raw sense, it would lead to the conclusion that what we need to do is to build some more remote parking that's significantly away from the core. And I think that if, on a traffic management and parking management strategy, may be the right way to go. There's a problem with that. And the problem with it is that what we're trying to do is to not just move people in and out of town, but we're trying to build a city. And so this is where engineering and experience are going to be in conflict, and we need to keep those both together. What I mean by that is I want us to think in terms of how all this lays out for what happens to Rochester at 5:00, when all those buses pull out, and suddenly huge amount of energy is removed from what should be the retail and the restaurant and the people going to the chateau. So we've got to figure that out. And that's why I'm going to push really hard for us to get as surgical as possible about the pinch points we have, about the ability to get people closer to the core. And it sounds counterintuitive, but I do think actually having the cars a few blocks within a long walk of downtown allows you to have people stick around a little while longer. So I don't know how that's answered, but just in a macro sense, I think this is really good information, and I very much appreciate it, and I look forward to digging in.
Thank you. Ms. Ronnie?
I just want to thank the city, Mr. Fries, SRF, and all its consultants that have put this effort together. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Excellent. Colleagues, we have two additional items in the project updates. One, I'm thinking we might be able to address pretty quickly, which is, I think, a really great follow-up from the issue that Mayor Ryback raised at the December board meeting regarding excess TIF and whether or not it could be used for transit. And then we need to take an action on the, we have the opportunity to take an action at the proposed, for the proposed Titan Opus development. And then we have a few more things, just to remind folks, we're going to get an update on Mortenson Development, heart of the city, and quick budget update.
So I'm going to ask Gary, RT, if you recall, or RT Ryback, if you recall, you had a request for the city staff and EDA staff to go back and take a look at the opportunity for TIF funds to be directed to transit for funding options. And Gary Newman put a really excellent memo together that's in your packet. And Gary, if you want to make a few comments on that?
I think I can cover this in three comments. First, there is a good dedicated source of funding for transit already in the legislation. There's 116 million of the 585 million has to go for transit. So we're starting from that base, and thank goodness for the county, they're providing 40% of that approximately is coming from Olmsted County through their DMC quarter-cent transit tax. So we have that as a base. The second comment is Mayor Ryback mentioned that he had special legislation in Minneapolis to allow a value-capture district that also could be a funding source for transit. In checking with our bond attorney and reviewing this, the exemptions we have in the current state legislation that the city has for tax increment financing can do essentially the same thing without special legislation. So that is one of the many tools we'll have to look at in the event that the transit costs are higher than 116 million, which I think many of us anticipate they're likely to be. So that is, I think, some very good news. And then the third thing is, kind of along those same lines, the city has already been setting up our tax increment financing districts and economic development districts. When you do a tax increment financing district, we target the specific development property that it's going on is the TIF district. You can have a larger economic development district. And already for five of the eight tax increment financing projects we've done in the downtown, in the DMC area in the last couple of years, for five of those, we've already used the whole DMC area as that larger economic development district, meaning if there's excess funds that aren't provided to incentive developer, they can go for a lot of different things, including other kinds of infrastructure improvements, and it could also go for transit. So I think we have pretty good flexibility in the future, and we do have a tool similar to what RT was suggesting. We hadn't thought of that, frankly, until he brought that up, but we do have the same capacity to do it, we believe, without special legislation.
Thank you. RT, would it be helpful if we turned the screen so that you are looking at the presenters now, rather than at a static screen?
Yeah, that'd be great. Could I just comment quickly?
Please.
I really appreciate that presentation and think this is big news, because this gives us the ability to think more strategically and bigger about transportation. It does require taxing. It was a common good in transportation. So, good news.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, I believe we're ready to move on to the Titan Opus project. Yes?
Great.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, board members, thank you very much. Urban on First is the project that will be in front of you today. That group, that project has already been in front of you twice, if you recall, so most of the details have been covered, and the project is here at a request for DMC funding. And Patrick has a few slides that he'll do just to update you on the project.
Yep. Thank you. So, Madam Chair, members of the committee, I'll be joined by Terry Spath in making just a couple of comments, but I'll refer you to page 179 of your packet. This is the report that leads to our recommendation of the DMCC Board recognizing this project as a public infrastructure project, and further our joint recommendation that this be supported with $3.8 million in city tax increment financing. Now, Mayor Ryback, you aren't seeing the screen, which is going to show the images of the project as a reminder. It's located in the Discovery Square District on First Avenue, faces First Avenue and South Broadway at approximately Fifth Street. The imagery that we've seen at prior presentations by the developer shows, again, frontage on First Avenue and Broadway. It is a mixed-use development, primarily residential, with 156 units of market-rate apartments. It is very bicycle-friendly, both indoor and outdoor bicycle storage for residents and the public, enhanced pedestrian connections, green roof, again, high-density housing, adjacent to jobs, so many people who live in that building will be able to walk to work on a regular basis. It fits into the fabric of our downtown, a six-story with 9,000 square feet of street-level retail and 156 parking spaces. It's a total project investment of $38 million. As we are proposing, having reviewed the financials and having worked with the developer, we believe there is a gap that could be and should be supported with tax increment financing. However, as much as 30% of the increment that is generated from the project would be available for other purposes within, in the districts, similar to what Gary was just describing in his memo. Currently, the property generates $70,000 a year, and property taxes and post-development once occupied will generate $472,000. And it will generate both permanent and short-term jobs. So we have done the full evaluation of the project. Again, you can find our report in your packet. We evaluated against these criteria, identified listed on the screen, and happy to respond to any questions that you might have. I will just also note that it is, this project is before you, and on this chart, we show both the financing process that we go through and we indicate where we are in that process. And similarly, there's a land use and zoning process that the city manages, and it has progressed along that. I would just indicate that it received unanimous support from both the Planning Commission and City Council at its preliminary review in December, and will be going back before the Planning Commission and City Council in February for final approvals. With that, I'll just ask Terry if you have any additional comments.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I believe Patrick pretty much covered what we have reviewed in terms of how we feel this project is supportive of the DMC initiative. In addition to the DMC development plan and looking at it, I also looked at it in terms of how it coincides and is consistent with the city's downtown master plan and that providing that mix of housing and commercial use along that First Avenue corridor, which we consider to be the main street corridor in our downtown. We feel it's consistent with that as well, and had recommended approval of the project.
Thank you. So let me ask if my colleagues have any questions about the substance of this project, and then we can move to a discussion of the resolution, which I have a few comments about. All right. Seeing none. Colleagues, I want to draw your attention to Resolution D, and Kathleen has a minor amendment which she'd like to suggest that we consider. But before we, I'm sure you've all had a chance to look at this, before we get into this, I want to just comment that I think that in the December board meeting, you had a very good conversation about the importance of looking at financing, and that is reflected in this resolution. Also, during the course of the last month or so, there have been good conversations between the EDA and the city and some of us on the board about how we handle it when projects change during the course of this review process. And in your resolution, you'll see that there are a couple of ways that we're trying to make sure that the projects don't change substantially from approval to when they get built, and that if they do change, that we know about it. And so you'll see that in terms of a description of the size of the footprint and the kinds of uses that the project would be. But I would like to, not for today, but I'd like to suggest that that's worthy of a broader policy discussion amongst all of us, both the elected representatives of Rochester and Olmsted County, as well as our board and the EDA, about how we handle that going forward. And so just want to put that as sort of a bookmark for us over the next month or so. But with that, with your permission, I'd suggest that we ask, maybe we could have a motion for this amendment, a motion for the motion. Must be getting tired. Someone like to move approval of this motion?
It's all moved.
And a second.
Second.
And then I'd like to pause for discussion, and maybe Kathleen, if you could start by telling us what this minor change you want to make, you suggest we make.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the third "Be it resolved" on page 194, this is the paragraph that the chair was just referencing, and the suggestion here is, under the first one, which is the 90 days, that we actually tie it to something. So my suggestion here is that the evidence of financing is presented within 90 days following the final city approvals for land use and planning, because at that point, the developer can go out and get the financing. But in any event, no later than June 18th of 2017, which is projected to be the 90 days beyond the final approvals.
Okay. Would someone like to move that amendment?
I would move that.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion or question of that amendment? The city, I'm understanding the city and the EDA, I think that this is a good idea. Okay. All right. So we will, seeing no further discussion, we are now voting on that amendment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Or oppose. That motion carries. And so now we have the amended Resolution D. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right.
Madam Chair, the next item on our project update is Mortenson Project Update. You've identified Discovery Square as one of your top priorities, and we believe we've made excellent progress, so this project will be an example of the progress. You heard a little bit this morning from one of the public comment, someone in a public comment about Collider. Collider is also in Discovery Square, so we're working very hard on our end to create this ecosystem and make sure that Discovery Square is successful. The Mortenson Project is one example, an excellent example, of some progress that's happening in the Discovery Square sub-district. I'd like to invite Jeremy Jacobs with Mortenson Development to join us and give a progress report.
Welcome, Jeremy.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, as Lisa indicated, I'm Jeremy Jacobs, and I'm with Mortenson. On behalf of Mortenson and our entire project team, I'm thrilled to be here to begin our process.
I'm so sorry to interrupt you. I just, in terms of our ongoing logistics, RT, would you like us to turn the screen so that you can see the screen?
That'd be great.
Okay. Thank you. One more time. Very much appreciate it. Okay, sorry to interrupt.
No problem. We're just thrilled to be here to begin our public engagement process, so we look forward to being in front of you today and again in the future. I have a clicker. In the interest of time, I've got a lot here. I'm going to trim some of the fat off of today's presentation. I know my colleague behind me, John Buggy, has a terrific presentation, and I don't want to cut into that. But I will say that the intent of today is to just highlight what we've done since we were awarded the opportunity to develop as Discovery Square, who the team is that's performing the work, the steps ahead, and the spirit with which we're tackling the work. And with that in mind, we started with this vision statement, which provides a blueprint for us for all of the work that we're doing and reminds us as we move forward that this is more than a real estate transaction for us. is more than a real estate transaction for us. This vision statement pretty profoundly tells us what happened, what needs to happen in Rochester for Mayo Clinic to succeed as a world-class organization and city moving forward. It inspired Mortenson to rally all of our time and resources 13 months ago to invest into Discovery Square. We're happy to be the leader of this project as a developer, but we fundamentally believe that this is vital to the outcome and success of the district. So with that, wanted to kind of move on to where we are and what we've done. So we were selected in September of last year. Since then, we've been hard at work. Our initial effort focused on engaging a design team, and happily, we had 13 responses from 13 different architectural firms across the country. There was unbelievable interest in this project, and as we announced a few months ago, we've selected RSP and HOK, which have been a truly dynamic partner, and they've brought a lot to the table. We're excited to begin revealing images and programming and more thought in subsequent meetings, but that'll be really exciting. The other thing I wanted to focus on is Visioning Session 1 and 2. We recently spent a lot of time with Mayo Clinic, who will be one of our tenants in our building, sort of fundamentally understanding what type of research it is that Mayo Clinic intends to do. And what we've pulled away from that is that this building will be a new hub for regenerative and individualized medicine, and we feel like those types of research are going to be magnets for entrepreneurs, researchers, and companies the world over. But it'll also begin to allow us to tell the story to Rochester, to the state of Minnesota, and to the region, what's really happening here already. And so we see this building as a way to put science on display, and that's something that we'll use to invigorate our design and move forward. Here we have all of our team members. Mortenson Development is happy at quarterback, but this project is truly going to take a village. We've been fortunate to work in a collaborative way already with the EDA, Lisa and Patrick and their team with the city of Rochester, who has been great, the county. Everyone is already at the table, but we've got some terrific partners. I mentioned our design partners. Many of these names are familiar, some of them may not be. We recently engaged Colliers International to lead our brokerage efforts, but even that particular effort won't be done without a tremendous assist from the Minnesota Deed Office, Medical Alley, the EDA, Mayo Clinic, and many other stakeholders who are truly invested in the outcome of Discovery Square. We're always mindful of the master plan, and these are things that continue to influence and suggest the direction in which we move with our design and the tenants that we try to, sorry, excuse me, the tenants that we try to bring into the district. One thing I really want to focus on is minority-owned business and women-owned business inclusion. This is a fundamental value of Mortenson. It's something that we've done very successfully in much larger and more public projects, for example, US Bank Stadium and others. But it's something that we do on every project, and projects that get no notoriety. Certainly, this project will get some, but we commit to you that we will ensure that we engage early, we engage often, and we have a very high goal for inclusion in our project, and that's something that we'll manage ourselves to and report back to you. Lastly, I wanted to highlight some of the inspiring projects that we've visited around the country. Cortex in St. Louis is a blueprint, if you will, for what we're trying to do. It's a truly inspiring project that's been underway for about five years, and if you have the time, spend a few minutes on its website. It's a Midwestern city, it's one of the few research hubs like this that we're trying to create in Discovery Square that's centered in the middle of the country. It's oftentimes ignored, but it is a beautiful project that is developer-led, it's been inspired by the University of Washington, St. Louis University, the city of St. Louis, and many other partners. In many ways, the fabric of why it's moving is like Discovery Square. But what's inspiring about it is that it's a hub now for innovation and entrepreneurs. If you walk into any one building within Cortex, you immediately perceive the energy that's occurring within that building. You don't quite know what's going on, you don't understand the research behind the wall necessarily, but there's something different about it, and it's a magnet. And so we will continue to spend time thinking about Cortex. HOK, one of our design partners, continues to be engaged in Cortex on a day-to-day basis, so we're able to pull in a lot of lessons learned, and that'll continue to push us in the right direction. These other projects are no less great, and we highlight them because they are significant in terms of our design direction. And then lastly, our path forward. This is an aggressive schedule, and we said that from day one. I remember being in front of a microphone for the first time and committed to an October groundbreaking date. That's something that we still intend to do. We recognize that there are a lot of variables that could push our schedule around, but we understand the importance of getting a stake in the ground symbolically, but just to begin to enable the research to happen. This needs to move quick, and so we're stacking our process in order to make that happen. Lastly, I want to adapt a quote from Mother Moses, who said that if we build St. Mary's, the world will find a path to our door. We feel the same way about Discovery Square. If we build Discovery Square together, the world will find a path here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Ronnie.
Mr. Jacobs, thank you for presenting a very audacious and noble goal, and very practical, given Mortenson's reputation of its past.
Thank you.
I have a question for you in page 205, which lists all the companies that are involved on the project, so far, thus far.
Yes.
I'm wondering how many of these businesses are small business, or women-owned business, or minority-owned business?
I can state with certainty that Colliers is a woman-owned business. That's owned by Jean Kane and has long been held as a women-owned business. Colliers is a partner on many of our projects, not entirely for that reason, but they will do a terrific job as a brokerage partner. We will bring many other opportunities to the market, and we'll have a more intentional focus on minority and women-owned businesses. But I could probably provide to you separately a report that indicates how these companies themselves fall into those categories.
A follow-up question to that, how many of them are small businesses?
I cannot give you a precise estimate on that.
We'll follow up, though.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I know, I want to just say that I think in most ways, this is the most exciting part of this meeting, because this is really the pathway for job creation that are great-paying jobs based on an innovation economy that is connected to the strengths of Mayo, but really building on those strengths. It's, to me, this is really kind of the, you know, innovation and invention compounding that's going to be happening in this, in this new Discovery Square, so I'm very excited about it. I appreciate the aggressive timetable, and I think this is a really big deal.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor Ryback.
I think you said it beautifully. We just have to keep in front of us that this is the number-one thing that we're working on, and it's primarily not in our hands. But I just want to emphasize that I so appreciate Mayo's leadership on this. This whole project, all the transportation, the housing, the hotels, all of that, is all about exactly what you're doing here, and we don't have a lot to do with it, but come to us when you need help, because this is getting this right and getting this filled with the right people, and that point about St. Louis's spirit, right spirit really makes sense. Thanks for what you're.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, our final, our final update is another top priority for this board, is the Heart of the City sub-district update. Mr. John Buggy from RSP Architects, we've asked him to join us and give you a quick snapshot of what's happening on the public realm design since they started.
Thanks, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Chair Smith, board, thank you very much. Robin Gianser joins me, too. Robin's with Cohen &amp; Partners, and I'm John Buggy with RSP. Do we have our slides up? Let's see. There we are. All right. We're honored to provide you this update. We're going to be as concise as we can, too, given the time constraints, and, but we do want your feedback and your interaction during the timeframe that we've got, okay? As a reminder, this is our scope and our schedule. The team, which is RSP, Cohen &amp; Partners, Nine Square, HRNA Advisors, and Kimley Horn, we are selected to develop a schematic design for the heart of the heart of the city, and you wanted our work completed with cost estimates by June of 2017. We're on schedule. We have completed our discover phase, we have been working closely with EDA, your community advisory committee, Mayor Brady, Patrick, you can talk more about that if you want, but we've had great meetings with them, they are fully engaged. We're working closely with the city as well, so it's been an inclusive process, and it's been good to hear actually reference to Heart of the City in some of the other presentations this morning. So there's definitely a web, a network of consultants that are, I would say, very engaged in communicating with one another. I don't see or sense any sort of silos with the conversations. Our study area, the heart of the heart of the city, it's outlined in pink dashed line there on that map, but the map we're shown is a little bit broader because heart of the city connects and links to so much more in DMC. Board, I'm noticing our packet, our presentation is slightly different than your packet. We were encouraged to condense our packet due to time constraints, so I apologize for that, but all of the slides you're seeing here are really referenced within the packet. All right. I want to do just a very brief summary of our discovery phase. We did an extensive amount of qualitative research over the initial two-month period of our work. We did the research throughout the heart of the city and throughout the city of Rochester. We had a lot of fun. I would say we were engaged, engaging and curious ambassadors for DMC and the heart of the city, and we met with hundreds of people. The reason why is we felt it was really important to understand the community well, not to take that step for granted, because we feel strongly that the solutions for heart of the city need to be authentic to Rochester and really understanding Rochester. What we learned has been grouped into three primary stakeholder groups, very clearly patients and companions, very clearly the visitors to Rochester, and very clearly community members and primary business stakeholders. I want you to know, we've met with the building owners around heart of the city. We've met with building and business organizations throughout downtown, too. We've met with major employers as well. So we've taken the time to make sure we meet and engage and understand as much as we can before we launch into design. In part, we also wanted to identify what makes these businesses tick and what we can do in public space to improve the economy of the heart of the city and the experience of the heart of the city. We wanted to understand what promotes healing. After all, this is about creating America's city for health and wellness. We understand connections, connections that are needed to make economy thrive and to make both residents and visitors feel connected to the city of Rochester. We also, as I said before, really wanted to identify what was unique to Rochester, and the pull-out quote here is one that hit all of us in the design team about the people of Rochester. We learned story after story about businesses and residents feeling like they're part of the care team in the heart of the heart of the city. It's really interesting, and I think it's a really unique quality of the heart of the city and the community around that, in the Rochester community, that we don't want to lose either. There are a lot of opportunities that have presented themselves through our research. Again, creating this unique destination for Rochester, understanding the distinctly unique user groups and participants in this space. There are barriers in the Peace Plaza in the heart of the city that need to be removed, and there are opportunities to elevate healing and the art of healing. There are opportunities to reveal the magic of Mayo and what Mayo does, and we really have an opportunity to create a compelling destination for the city of Rochester. We also did extensive visual audit and analysis of how people use heart of the city. We watched a lot. We have walked every nook and cranny, subway level, street level, and skyway level, so we have a visceral understanding. This diagram is one analysis diagram, where there seems to be a bit of a line right now between, I'll say, this patient zone and community zone, and we're thinking, hmm, this would be better. Another diagram is that when you think about Peace Plaza, there's really a strong opportunity for an engaging experience from Gonda down to the Chateau Theatre. And the cross streets, second, first, and the alleyway really have an opportunity to become inviting places to get to this more activated and engaging Peace Plaza space. We're also balancing a lot of design drivers, the stakeholder and community input, the economic vitality and viability of what we create. Again, HRNA Advisors is our economic strategist on our team, so we're not looking just at how do we make heart of the city beautiful and a destination, but how do we really understand the business drivers that make the public space economic generating and revenue-enhancing, while also keeping it authentic Rochester and contextual, while also being aware of and responsive to the site constraints, be it utilities, be it other issues, transportation, as well as the four seasons that are so real in Minnesota. Robin's going to, we boiled all that down into a series of design principles that are on the screen here. Robin's going to take about three minutes, four minutes to walk through these design principles, and we're going to ask of you, if you have the, if you have the guts, is to say, hmm, as we've listened to these design principles, we're feeling you guys are on target, or you've missed something, or we got another idea for you. All right, Robin?
So as John said, Robin Gianser with Cohen &amp; Partners, thank you for having us. As you can tell, the process we've been going through, now that we've heard this kind of massive amount of information, is distilling. And how do we take all of the demands and all of the goals and pair those into a series of simple design principles that are unique to Rochester and contextual and authentic? So, destination being kind of the big picture, how do we make this a place that everybody wants to be inviting? How do we continue to facilitate the really fantastic events that the RDA is doing in this space? How do we make it big and keep it small? You know, there's this dichotomy of big city in Rochester and the fact that it's a small town, and not wanting to lose either of those and really strengthen both of them. Reveal the unseen, which taps directly into a lot of the stories that we heard from people we interviewed, about how there's so much that goes on beyond, behind the scenes, both in Mayo and in the retail establishments and the businesses that support it and support the patients. Make it about life, make it affirming, make it cathartic to be in this space. Make it about art, really extending and acknowledging the incredible art presence that the Mayo Clinic has established here. Make it about healing, obviously, really extending the Mayo mission out into the public space, something that's really been missing in this zone. Make it inviting. Inviting is kind of the word that kept coming up. How do we, how do we make this space the place everybody wants to go to? Both patients and excited to be here, and visitors and the convention crowd, and how do we pull them all together into a space that serves each of them in a unique way? A part of it being inviting is acknowledging that it's cold here a lot of the time, and so we've been tapping into ideas in cities like Montreal, Vancouver, Aspen, winter towns, and how do you program public space for winter and keep that activity going year-round? Make it bright. We see light both as functional and as an art element and a safety element, and really thinking that through holistically. Make it connected. You know, one of our original charges, specifically from Mayor Ryback, was how do we connect the skyway and the street level and the subway level in interesting ways and make it an asset rather than a, than a weakness? And make it green. It's a challenge, given the space, given the conditions, but it's definitely something that we're committed to figuring out how to make work.
So, Chair Smith, board, that's where we're at. Our next steps are obviously the, really formalizing and going the design phase of this. We're ready to come back, we will be ready in a little bit of time to come back with some great ideas. But your thoughts about our design principles, any feedback if you would.
Thank you. Ms. Ronnie.
Mr. Buggy.
Yes.
I'm really excited about what you've laid out for design principles here, and your graphics are fantastic. I especially like the heat map that you presented. I expect you to do all of it. Absolutely, I expect both of you to accomplish every one of these and on top of that, economic development. development. Of course, that's what we're after.
Yep. Absolutely.
I'm going to ask you the same question that I asked Mortenson, which is how many of the firms that you've identified, there are RSP, Cohen &amp; Partners, Nine Square, HRNA, Kim Lee Horn, how many of those companies are small, minority-owned, or women-owned?
Yeah. Great question. Small business first. Nine Square is a small local business. None of them are minority-owned. We are engaging consultancies to help us do the work that our minority own. Particularly, one of the challenges in this has been to pull together all the technical documents, you know, all the utilities, all the building plans, and we have a minority firm based in the Twin Cities that's pulling together all of that information for us. We are also, there's a graphic design firm that is potentially going to become involved, but how shall I say? We are committed to meeting our obligations and our commitments in terms of the fees, and we're building the scope to work as we're also understanding the needed work available, Susan. So this has been one of those initiatives where, as we dig into it, we're learning the nice opportunities to engage others that weren't necessarily apparent as we started, but.
I'll also add, Cohen &amp; Partners is also a registered local small business.
Thanks.
Just a question, another question, a follow-up. Mr. Buggy, are you indicating that, what is your goal? Is it 5% of the fees, 10% of the fees? What are you indicating?
There are, there were two goals that were put in front of us by the, by the city and by DMC EDA. They were both for targeted business goals and then also for business participation, too. So we're working on both of those. Gary, you want to jump in? Yeah, because we've formalized it.
It's a 4% contractor goal. It's an employment goal of 10%, 4% minority and 10%, or, excuse me, and 6% for, for women.
And we're far ahead of the participation goals and the targeted business goals. That's been a little bit more of a challenge, but we're, we're doing our best to achieve that target.
Thank you.
Mayor Brady.
Great report. Tomorrow, I think it is, I'm giving a presentation at an event at noon time, and I have, I had called that unbeknownst to seeing all of this today, but, you know, are we there yet? In the other words, will it still be my city? And the first slide you had here is make it Rochester. I'm just going to take this out and probably use that as the basis for my presentation because the interview I had, which I think I probably way, went way over the time limit and talked to the interviewer, when I see this, I probably wasn't as succinct as, but reading all of those, those are the things I was getting at. So I think you really captured it and look forward to it, but.
Actually, Mayor, it's you verbatim. We just quoted.
There you go.
But great job, and looking forward to the continuation.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments? I think you can, I know my board pretty well. I think you can interpret this lack of like, of lost to say as, as, you know, this looks, this looks like it's totally on track.
It's not just you're tired.
And we might be a little bit brain-dead from a long meeting.
Appreciate it. At one level, it is kind of a no-brainer, but it's, it's important to distill it into some clear components. Thank you for receiving them well, and we're really inspired by, by, by the work we've done that's led to this and are excited about the next steps, which is really getting real so that we can begin, bring some schematic design concepts to you, and I think we'll have a very engaging conversation at that meeting. Okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Good. We are now to item number nine, if I read my Roman numerals correctly. Mr. Beer.
In the interest of time, there's, I won't bore you with all the details. Basically, we've got 53% of our budget remaining. The EDA has 41% of their budget remaining, and our DMCC budget has 79%. So we're in good shape financially, and if there's any other questions, I can try and answer them now, or we can talk about them later.
Any questions from Mr. Beer? Then I'd like to remind everybody that our next regularly scheduled meeting is April 27th at 9:30. Any other updates or comments? Excellent. Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.